May I have the chance to proceed?
Yes, please.
Good evening, this is the meeting of Borough Highlands Day or Council Special Meeting on Wednesday, April 12, 2023. Notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Communities Act have been satisfied. Notice that this meeting was properly geared in by transmissions to Ask by Park Press and the Two River Times and by posting at the Borough Highlands Municipal Building and filing with the Borough Clerk all on March 28, 2023. Items listed on the agenda are subject to change. I will now do roll call. Councilmember Sontas, Councilmember Slack, Councilmember Melnick, Councilmember President Ochuski.
Yes.
May I re-ai?
Yes.
Please stand for the Pledge of Leagues.
(Inaudible)
I was just pulling up that wonderful letter that we got from our friend Commissioner that dismissed Oceanport and Shore Regional's motion to muck up our process. So that leaves us free here to proceed as we are intending to for our mediation session, which is going to be on April 21. In order for the record, that Councilmember Melnick has arrived at 6:04.
(Inaudible).
So without further ado, I just wanted to introduce Vito Jackery-Arden and Carrie Wright, our attorneys that have been with us from day one on this. It's been four long years, maybe even five. I'm thinking we started this in 18?
It's happened about the way it's saying.
Yeah, exactly. Of course, totally the same. And unless the council has any questions that you would like to pose to anyone, I was going to give the call for Vito to give us our overarching view of where we've been, where we are, and where we hope to be at the end of next week. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. So Carrie and I essentially want to accomplish two things to try to dispel rumors and get everything real focused. So I'm going to go over a chronology of where we've been and where we are. Carrie's going to go over some financial issues, but the bottom line is what you heard from the mayor. The first is that the legal initiative undertaken by Shore Regional and Oceanport to derail the process was dismissed in its entirety. We made a motion to have it dismissed in July. The Commissioner rendered a decision last week granting our motion in full, so that issue has been set aside. And then the municipal entities have agreed on a mediation process. I'll describe in a moment how we got there, but the significance of the mediation process and Carrie's going to describe to you is this. The only issue standing between these three communities and the significant questions about the future of your educational program being placed before the voters, the only issue, is yours. There's no outside entity, right? You're either going to come to an agreement on a funding mechanism that we can present to the Commissioner of Education, or you're not. And if you do, we certainly think, and the "we," by the way, is an issue of unanimity. So the "we" is the three municipalities and the three Boards of Education. And we think that we have presented a credible structure to the Department of Education that the Department of Education is simply serving as a duty, determining whether or not this is something that the voters should get a chance to consider. And as I said, on that particular issue, there is no disagreement among the governing entities. So we look forward to getting this last piece resolved. So let me go over the chronology, as I said, in terms of where we've been and where we are. So as you know, this initiative, the initiative to combine Seabright's desire to extricate itself, make grossly disproportionate tax structure where it is paying millions more than its voters initially agreed to pay because equalized property value is being used to fund Shore Regional, it was forced into the structure that it finds itself from an elementary standpoint in what Oceanport means, meaning if you live in Seabright or if you lived in Seabright, the educational structure for your high school children is based upon a financial arrangement that the state visited upon you, you did not approve. And the educational structure for your elementary children was forced upon you by the Department of Education. Your voters did not approve it. So certainly if you're in Seabright, the desire for self-determination, which is pretty substantial here in the United States, one of the few things that hasn't changed in recent years, remains intact. And so certainly for Seabright, the issue is having a structure submitted to the voters. While Seabright was looking to extricate itself from that structure, Highlands and Atlantic Islands and Henry Hudson faced with declining enrollment, were sharing services to a great extent and considering whether or not they really need the three separate school districts to educate the children in those two communities. Now, what they did over a period of time was lead to this moment. That is to say, they were so efficient at sharing services, they reached the point where there were no further savings to be had. And so even regionalizing the three Boards of Education doesn't provide much savings because they've shared services to great extent in recent years. And so you can see how these two situations on parallel tracks came to one. That is to say, Seabright is being taxed so disproportionately, it can save a substantial amount of money by getting out of Oceanport and Shore Regional and contributing to the educational structure if it were to combine with Highlands and Atlantic Islands. So Seabright saves a significant amount of money, and Highlands and Atlantic Islands enjoy the savings, but they couldn't enjoy without Seabright because there aren't many savings left to be had, given the way they share services. So that led to a dialogue between Seabright and the governing bodies in Highlands and Atlantic Islands. There was outreach to the Boards of Education, who hired special counsel, who is here tonight, Jonathan Bush. And ultimately, the entities did their own feasibility studies, which came to essentially the same conclusion, namely that it made sense, certainly made sense, to submit to the voters. Right, there were educational benefits, the one school district structure for three communities as compared to three for Highlands and Atlantic Islands alone. No one would design that structure, a structure that exists now, three different school districts for those two communities with declining enrollment. And Seabright, namely, wouldn't design its current structure, as I've just mentioned here, didn't have the chance to, was forced upon it. So ultimately, with both feasibility studies reaching essentially the same conclusion, on July 15 of last year, they filed a petition. That is, all six entities filed a joint one. However, they were unable to come to a conclusion as to what to do with the savings that Seabright would infuse into the district. And so when the petition was filed, the language in the petition, which went where a funding formula would otherwise have been, simply said to the Commissioner that the parties were going to negotiate the proposed tax levy allocation and would submit it to the Commissioner forthwith. "Forthwith," one of those awesomely little terms, it doesn't have a precise definition, but I know that "forthwith" doesn't mean nine months. And it's been nine months since that was submitted to the Commissioner on July 15, and there still is no proposed tax levy allocation, which was promised to the Commissioner. So it is not a surprise to us that that hasn't proceeded. The petition was filed with the Commissioner of Education, and then, at their request in Department of Education, a copy was also sent to the County Superintendent Wes Richens. Since that time, there has been an endeavor to reach agreement on the tax allocation. When the parties were unable to do that, a suggestion was made by the Tribe District Superintendent Tara Beans that the parties pursue mediation. Specifically, and I'll simply lead to you the submission from their attorneys in August of last year, "Given the momentous impact of the apportionment and savings agreements on the respective communities, Dr. Beans still thinks it important that the parties move forward cautiously rather than rushing forward, and need the Executive County Office to review the various scenarios being proposed. She stands ready to request that meeting pending your indication of your client's willingness to participate." This option has also been strongly endorsed by Mark Maggiar, whom you may recall was the Assistant to Steve Swinney, the Senate President, who advocated for the legislation that allows any of this to take place the way it's taking place. In any event, the mediation did not take place right away, and the parties tried to reach their own agreement on the tax levy and were unsuccessful. As a result, on August 25 of last year, the Boards of Education advised as follows, "We've been asked to inform you that the changes proposed are unacceptable, and our client," I think that was clients, "will not be moving forward at this time as the revisions render the apportionment formula unacceptable. Instead, our client wishes to defer from any further action regarding the joint petition and public questions and commence negotiations concerning apportionment with mediation by the County Superintendent or Business Administrator." And again, we were asked about our willingness to do so. And the three municipalities ultimately agreed to participate in that mediation, and then the attorneys for the Board of Education said, "We'll reach out to the Executive County Superintendent and get that scheduled." On September 23, the attorney for the Boards of Education said that the Executive County Superintendent said he was told by the Department of Education he wasn't permitted to mediate, which struck us all as an odd development. There are many types of disputes, residency disputes, budget disputes, that county superintendents mediate all the time, but in any event, he was advised that he couldn't do so. The attorney for Atlantic Islands said, "Well, perhaps because he's involved, that's the problem. We'll see if we can get another county superintendent, a superintendent from another county to mediate this." But we were advised in October that he would not do that. So we talked about retaining a mediator, retired judge, retired Department of Education official to do the mediation. In October, the attorneys for the Board of Education said that they wanted to talk to their clients because they didn't anticipate having to pay someone. We ultimately found a retired Department of Education who was willing to handle the mediation. He still is willing to handle it, and the gentleman is going to preside at the session on August 21. The Boards of Education, I'm sorry, April 23, the Boards of Education said that they were not interested in participating in that mediation, even after the municipalities said they would shoulder the entire cost, and advised that they thought the process was taking too long. The attorney for Atlantic Islands followed up with them in December, once we secured a written agreement with the retired Assistant Commissioner. And the Boards of Education advised in writing on December 5 that they were not interested in participating in mediation because they instead were reevaluating their position at this time, moving forward with a phase of the plan that would not include Seabright, and said specifically in writing that the Boards were concerned that the present delays are associated with Seabright only. Now, I just want to pause there for a second because that is a narrative I've heard repeated in terms of the delays posed by Seabright. It is true that this summer, Oceanport and Shore Regional filed a petition seeking to get the Commissioner of Education to block Seabright's participation in the process I just described. But we filed immediately a motion to dismiss that, and the thing sat there before the Commissioner of Education until the ruling last week. So there were no legal proceedings, there was no stay of these proceedings. The idea that that petition was preventing this process moving forward is false. In fact, for anyone here who read the Commissioner's decision, you see that the Commissioner said the issues raised by Oceanport and Shore Regional in terms of the impact of Seabright's departure are things I would be considering as part of a petition anyway. So the delay then and the delay now had nothing to do with that litigation. It has to do with the fact that the communities have not agreed on a funding formula, which is why, as the mayor pointed out, the mediation next Friday, April 21, is so significant. So the Boards of Education were advised when the mediation was originally scheduled in March that the mediation was taking place. As mentioned, they said they would not be participating, and as their attorney advised in December, instead, on March 17, they filed an amended petition seeking to proceed with a vote on regionalizing without Seabright. Carrie can go over this detail in a second, but I want to point out that while we have been unable to come up with a funding mechanism as to what Highlands and Atlantic Islands would do with the infusion of savings from Seabright, when the Boards of Education submitted that joint petition on March 17, 2023, they did propose a funding structure for what a K-12 regional district would look like without Seabright. And I know that in this community, there has been extensive supposition, although maybe some of you did the math, that at a 7-12 level, Highlands is subsidizing the education of the children from Atlantic Islands in those grades. That is a fact, and we're going to go over the numbers in a second. What the petition filed by the Boards of Education suggests is that that funding mechanism, which has you subsidizing Atlantic Islands 7-12, should be expanded so that the same formula is used K-12. Our goal here, remember, is to put something before the voters that we think the voters will approve. So from our standpoint, the idea of submitting something to the Commissioner of Education that is going to invite Highlands to accept the following proposition, you can surrender the independence of your K-6 school district, and in exchange for that, you can pay more taxes to educate children in the neighboring community, doesn't seem like something that's going to be successful. The goal for next Friday is not this single-minded selfish view of any of the parties participating. It's designed to find a funding formula that would be equally acceptable, and maybe equally less offensive, depending on your position, to the voters who would be willing to support it. And we've talked about this in many public meetings, where Seabright is willing to surrender a certain amount of its savings because it recognizes that it's the best vehicle for getting out of a hideously unfair structure, where they still enjoy savings. Now, Seabright, I don't believe, is taking the position that it's going to be forking over over $1 million a year to Highlands and Atlantic Islands out of charity. Seabright is acting, the Seabright officials are acting in the best interest of their community, which is, we believe that by surrendering some of these savings, this will make it acceptable to Highlands and Atlantic Islands where they get to save money and their voters will approve it. So it's a vehicle, this entire process is a vehicle, to submit something to the voters that the voters will approve, that provides a benefit for every town, even if the benefit is not precisely the same for each of the towns. As you've heard said before, Carrie and I have worked on projects like this throughout the state for many years, and the deal is the same everywhere, which is, you have to present something where every town benefits so that the voters are willing to surrender the status quo for something different. If you don't do that, this is just an academic exercise. So what's going on next Friday, again, based upon the tone of the conversation that exists between Highlands and Atlantic Islands, is not some knock-down, drag-out, welterweight fight. It's a desire to find that spot where the leadership in both communities can say, "We think it's worth fighting to get this before the voters, because we think that we get it before the voters, our communities will find it acceptable." And certainly with the mayor and council speaker themselves, they don't feel that way about a structure where Seabright is not included because you don't get the savings that we've talked about. In any event, with the Oceanport and Shore Regional petition now dismissed by the Commissioner of Education, the Department of Education has not made it clear how it will consider what's before it now, but it's clear, based upon the petition we submitted, it's incumbent on us to give them the tax allocation formula that we promised in July. In a constructive conversation I had with council for the Board of Education earlier today, we decided to reach out to the County Superintendent and Department of Education to say, "Hey, is there anything else you think you need us to resolve before you give us a ruling on the merits?" So we sent such a letter today. But as I said, the entire goal of this process is to work collaboratively, get the Commissioner of Education to authorize us to put something before the voters of these three communities that we think has a benefit to each of the communities, educationally and financially. So with that, I'm going to have Carrie go over some of the numbers, basically looking at the status quo, the K-12 structure without Seabright, the K-12 structure with Seabright. Many of these are numbers you've heard before, we're going to line them all up again, and then, as I said, hopefully have a productive discussion next Friday. So let me yield the call to Carrie, and then we'll turn it back to the mayor for any questions.
Thanks, Vito. More recently, we were asked in response to the amended petition that was filed to look at the financial analysis in terms of the status quo currently and what that amended petition would invite upon the Highlands taxpayers. So currently, we looked at the 22-23 tax levy. So instead of trying to project out what the enrollment might be, what the tax levies might be, what the equalized valuations might be, our financial expert looked at this year. If this year's tax levy was, as it is right now, with a 7-12 and a PK-6 structure, what is being paid, how many students from Highlands and Atlantic Islands are being sent, and if we were to change that structure to the PK-12 structure with the 100% equalized property value formula, which is what's presented in the petition that was filed by the Board of Education. So currently, as Vito mentioned a few minutes ago, there is a subsidy that flows from Highlands to Atlantic Islands. That comes in the form of, currently you are paying 100% equalized property value. Highlands sends about 46% of the students, the 7-12 basis, to that, to the Henry Hudson School District. They send about 46% of the students, but Highlands taxpayers are responsible for 48.9% of the ultimate tax levy. So right there, I went to law school, not to finance school, but you can tell there's going to be a delta there. So if you take that structure and you move it 100% equalized property value to the PK-12, in that regard, Highlands would be spending 43.2% of the students. So now you're adding the 46 students to the 7-12. Highlands would be spending 43.2% of the students and would be paying under a 100% equalized property value formula 45% of the tax levy. So there is still a difference there. The difference is 1.8%. So someone may look at that number and say, "1.8% doesn't sound like a lot." But the new regional tax levy would be $18,107,475. 1.8% in terms of that difference is $325,934.55. So that is the subsidy. We're not looking at, the numbers that we looked at don't involve, as I said, they don't involve projections in terms of how many students might be coming in the future or what the equalized property value. They also don't project what the savings may be. So this is meant to just provide Highlands and their mayor and council with just the raw numbers of if we were to change that structure, how much of that subsidy would carry over to this new PK-12 school district. So if this petition without Seabright were to be approved by the Commissioner, presented to the voters, it would be asking the voters to take on a $325,000 roughly annual additional subsidy to educate the students in Atlantic Islands on a PK-6 basis. So those are the numbers related to just changing that status quo based on the amended petition. I do not have the numbers for Seabright. Could you?
No, so the...
I did not bring them up.
We don't have the number for Seabright, because they have to agree on that as part of the mediation. But as you recall, right, I believe that the approximate number was a $600,000 tax savings for Highlands if they got approximate, once the Seabright payments are fully phased in, which was, I think the number was about 600,000. And so what you're contrasting, and that you see the significance that would allow us to be so focused on trying to get Seabright included, is it's a difference of increasing your subsidy to educate the Highlands kids, I'm sorry, the Atlantic Highlands kids, or Highlands and Atlantic Islands having the infusion of money from Seabright split between the two communities. And as I say, this is a point that the experts hired by the Boards of Education and the experts retained by us and the analysis done by Atlantic Islands agree on. That is to say, the savings that would come from combining would be almost entirely, not completely entirely, because there's an infusion of state aid that would come just on them forming a payed-up dividend without Seabright in the short term, but the ongoing insignificant savings would come from this infusion from Seabright, and that's why we've described the mediation the way we have, which is Highlands and Atlantic Islands deciding how to divide the infusion that comes from Seabright, and that's what's going to take place next Friday. So our goal, as I said, is to fill in that hole in our petition with a tax allocation formula and to see what else might be holding this up. From our experience, we cannot identify anything from the face of the petition or the law that would hold this up. That is, typically when you see these, if there's a significant amount of debt that one community is going to visit on another, if there is an ethnical, racial disparity that's going to be created, you see those as issues that cause problems with the Department of Education. None of the consultants see any such thing, none of the lawyers see any such thing. But certainly, the Department of Education, while using old yardsticks in terms of measuring whether this goes before the voters, are using a new statute. So if they see something that we don't necessarily see, we want to deal with it. But from our viewpoint, again, the only real issue is coming up with that funding formula and seeking enthusiastically, and I hope unanimously, the approval from the Commissioner of Education to let the voters decide how they want their children educated and how they want their tax dollars spent. It is about as motherhood and apple pie as you get. And with that, I'll yield back to you, Matt.
Thank you. Thank you for that, both of you. Just to do, and I'll give a quick overview, it all sounds very complex and mysterious, but it really isn't. It's about three towns trying to band together to do what's both best for their community and best for all of the other communities. So we don't, shouldn't be any one town that's going to suffer more. We all have different populations, we all have different student populations, we all have different equalized values. However, our equalized value has really grown so close together. I'll tell you, this is the preliminary equalized value, because that's not set in talks. Atlantic Islands is at 1.94 million. Highlands, billion, sorry, billion. You want that, I've got my reporters here. So 1 billion, 9, 094487, 000. Highlands is at 1 billion, 36 million, 710, 712. Seabright, 1 billion, 101 million, 563, 833. So if you look across all of them, the disparity between the boroughs is very, very low. It ranges from, just to put it into perspective, last year, the range difference of equalized value was a low of $8 million with a high of $166 million. Well, this year's values, the low is $7 million and the high is $64 million. So it's, equalized value has tightened up a lot. Population of students, that's a no-brainer because Seabright has so few children, and Atlantic Islands has, oh, let's take a look. Highlands is 294, roughly, I didn't take the numbers from the last year, 294 kids. Highlands is 294, roughly, I didn't take the numbers from the last year, 294 kids came through PK-12. And Atlantic Highlands has 405. So that's where that disparity in cost that Vito was talking about is coming together. So in any regionalization process, there is no equality of savings, because there's no equality of equalized value and number of students. What you try to do is you try to get as close as you possibly can where everybody wins, and that's what we have been trying to do. There's no, you know, dumping off your chest saying, well, I want to get the most for my town. That's never what this was about, at least for Highlands, I can't speak for anyone but myself. But order to work, we all have to work together towards solving the math, and it's not that hard to solve the math. That's why we have Excel. But honestly, I just wanted to explain that, that's all it is, it's about trying to save the most money for everybody so that it works for everybody, and then get it out to the commissioner, hopefully she blesses it, and then we get it on the ballot, and then you all get to vote. That's it, it's that easy.
I have one question. I just have one question, because you have experience all over the state with regionalized districts. Are there regionalized districts who work solely on equalized value?
So almost every regional district in the state works solely on equalized value, because the state forced that change in the 70s. So most, the vast majority of regional districts were not formed that way, they were formed based upon per people funding. The more people you send, the more you pay. And there was a view by the legislature, they were wrong, of course, but there was a view by the legislature in the early 70s that there was something potentially constitutionally flawed with that, and so they passed the law that basically said it didn't matter what your voters approved when you started the district, over the next four years, '73 to '77, we're going to phase it into a 100% equalized property value formula, which you can only change if the voters agree to change it, the voters in every single town. But once they did that, of course, they were winners and losers, and so I don't remember exactly the total, but I think before they changed the law, again, dozens of times, that was attempted, that if you submitted a proposed change for the voters, the record was like one win and like 60-some-odd losses. That is, you couldn't convince people to simply vote to increase their own school taxes for the thrill of reducing the school taxes in other towns, because that has passed in every town. Like, I think West Windsor, Queensborough was the only one that ever passed. And so, yeah, it was a different reason that it passed, but it's the only one that passed. So the state, having flubbed that, said in 1993, okay, we're going to change it again. You can have any, you can have equalized property value, you can have per people, or any combination thereof, and once you do that, that will unlock the floodgates, everyone's going to want to reach on it. So from 1993 until last year, when they created the law that allows us to do it now, the idea that in nearly 30 years, we change the law, let's see what happens. Three regional school districts were created, and three were forcibly dissolved by the voters, meaning that the net number of regional districts increased by a law that was designed to increase regional districts was zero. So now we have this law, which still allows you to have any combination of equalized property value and per people, and also allows you to have a 10-year phase-in, to what the formula is going to be, and 10 years where the formula is flowing before it's locked in. So there has never been a time in state history where there's so much flexibility in having a regional school district tax formula. Of course, in the year-plus since this law was passed, we still don't have any new regional districts, because in New Jersey, we love, you know, our home rule and the status quo. But again, we're very hopeful here, because of the unique scenario where Seabright is being taxed so disproportionately, there's this infusion of savings that we don't normally have. As I pointed out, with the regional districts proposed without Seabright, they're sharing so many savings, they're sharing so many services, there's no more savings that we had. So this is fairly unique. We've done a lot of studies in the past year and a half with this new law, and the savings in most of the places where we work just haven't been dramatic enough to convince people to change the status quo. Here, they can be quite dramatic.
I'm trying to keep this as short as I can. Few questions. One, for that amended petition that was sent by Dr. Beams, the Board of Education, to the state, did that have any collaboration with Highlands or Atlantic Highlands ahead of time to be aware of?
The municipalities?
Yeah.
No?
No. Okay, great. Second, the funding formula, absent any shared savings agreement, did that display a savings for both Highlands as well as Atlantic Highlands, not only Seabright as well, but Highlands and Atlantic Highlands, without any kind of shared savings agreement, would have seen, based on the funding formula, between equalized value and enrollment, would have shown savings for both Atlantic Highlands and Highlands out of the gate?
That's correct.
Great. And then lastly, with regard to both the study done by the municipalities and both the Boards of Education, do either of them call for students to be mingled at the lower grade, or is everything basically status quo for the elementary schools as well?
When we did the study for the municipalities, we assumed of a status quo. Number one, we didn't have reason to assume otherwise, and number two, that's typically what we do, that there's only one variable, right? When the study was done for the Boards of Education, they did the same, but Dr. Beams has said that she would move the sixth grade to the middle school. So that's not designed to increase or decrease savings, so it's not, again, if you're manipulating the structure, there could be savings that have nothing to do with the combination. What we point out there, of course, and again, there's unanimity about this, she's not free to move the sixth graders there, because they're part of a separate school district. So that is a tangible benefit. Dr. Beams says it's an educational benefit. We think there's a benefit to increasing the enrollment by having the Seabright children added there, but we have not changed anything. Even if it's in our study, we're assuming that the student-teacher ratio is going to remain precisely the same. It probably not, but if there's going to be savings, obviously, we could, so we could put poorly kids in a classroom, but you can have a whole bunch of savings, right? We didn't advocate anything like that. So the savings, to answer your question, are based simply on changing the structure.
Sure. And that movement of the sixth grade to the regional high school could also be driven by an overcrowding situation in Atlantic Highlands, which we might be experiencing right now. So not necessarily an educational benefit, but just trying to minimize a problem for Atlantic Highlands.
That's correct, but again, that was not part of our assumption, that it was an option that exists at one school.
Great, awesome. That's all we have. There's a lot of questions here.
Anything else you want to touch on before we go to the public?
We're good.
Okay. All right, if you could read the notice.
Individuals wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the presiding officer and shall give their name, address, and the group, if any, they represent. Although the council encourages public participation, it assumes the right for the presiding officers to terminate remarks to and/or by any individuals not in keeping with the conduct of a proper and efficient meeting. If any individual refuses to conduct themselves in a proper manner, they will be removed from the meeting. The council will allow them, or in other portions of the community, to discuss matters involving employment, appointments, termination of employment, negotiations, terms and conditions of employment, evaluation of the performance of, promotion, or discipline of any specific or prospective or current employee. There's a three-minute time limit for your comments.
Charlie Rooney, 196 Ocean Avenue, Seabright. So, all right, so I'm not really much of a tattoo guy, but I have to say I did get one for my wife for her birthday recently, and after what I heard this week, I think I'm going to get one for this arm, and it's going to say unencumbered. How would that look, right there? All right. So it's interesting that we just got word from the Commission of Education about this denial of this appeal. Now, I think it's a little more than just a coincidence that it happened after a month, approximately, of receiving this other petition that did not include Seabright. I think they looked at that and threatened and said, what's going on? Are they confused down there? All they have to do is give us the tax levy to complete the other petition. And then if we have to look at the appeal, we've been saying this for a while, but we seem to keep hearing, oh, Seabright is encumbered. We want to do this, but we can't do it now with Seabright. But we're not, we are now unencumbered, and I think it's time to move forward. The Commissioner has given us enough time, it's April, let's get the mediation done, and let's get this to the voters in Highlands and Seabright and Atlantic Highlands, and let them make the final decision on what they want to do about their taxes and their children. Thank you.
Erwin Bieber, 12 Trade Winds Lane, Seabright. I'm also a member of the Seabright Council. The first thing I want to do is I want to thank you, Mayor and Council, and Porzio Thiem, for all the great work you've been doing for years on trying to get what all studies have said is the absolute right thing to do, trying to get it to the goal line, and we all greatly appreciate that. We know it's not easy, there's been a lot of roadblocks thrown in your way, but you've stayed focused on trying to get it done, and we greatly appreciate that. Just a clarification on one thing for me, if I understand correctly, Vito, there are three elements of savings that are critical to a process like this. The first, in our particular case, is the regionalization of Atlantic Highlands and Highlands results in efficiencies and savings, which has been on the order of about $400,000. The second is by regionalizing, the state recognizes that regionalization effort, and it reduces the reduction in state funding over time, so there are savings that occur because of that, which means Highlands and Atlantic Highlands greatly benefit by reduced reduction of state aid because they're embracing regionalization. And the third is the fact that by bringing Seabright in, when steady state occurs, there's roughly $2 million savings between the two towns, Atlantic Highlands and Highlands. So you put all of those three pieces together, and there's millions of dollars that are going to be saved, steady state and forever as a result of this. The thing that we never seem to talk about is, we never seem to talk about that middle piece, that without regionalization, that money is lost, and there's accelerated reduction in funding from the state to Atlantic Highlands and Highlands. I think it's very important that the residents of the two towns understand that, because if they don't take action, it's going to get done to them, and they will have no control of it. Is that correct, Vito?
The short answer is yes, that is correct. The state, in addition to creating a process that allows Seabright to do this without being subject to a vote where the other communities and sure regional could kill it, which is the way it was, where the law was changed in January, in a further effort to encourage this, has provided additional financial incentives. They'll pay for the study, which they did, they'll pay for the special aid, which they will. And as you point out, they will tinker with the state aid formula so that state aid monies, which otherwise are disappearing, won't disappear in the short run for Highlands and Atlantic Highlands. But they will eventually disappear, right? So the easiest, the most significant element there is that there is equalization aid that's being phased out over a four-year period. If this were to happen, it would be phased out instead of over an eight-year period for Highlands and Atlantic Highlands. So that's where the additional state aid comes from. But as we also stated, the long-term savings, if not from that, because it disappears after eight years, it's at four, the long-term savings comes from the money provided by Seabright, and what's being discussed next Friday is how that money is going to be allocated over the long term, 20 years and beyond.
The other thing that you said that I found very compelling was the fact that if Atlantic Highlands and Highlands try to regionalize themselves without Seabright under 100% equalized value rate, it's going to result in Highlands paying an additional $300,000 or something thousand, which you would normally think, when brought to the voters, would cause the voters of the Highlands to vote down regionalization.
That has been the concern repeatedly expressed by the mayor and council, and of course, I agree with it. We see all the time folks reluctant to modify the status quo. How do you convince people to modify it, where the modification is surrender your independence and pay more in taxes? So my goal isn't to get the Commissioner to get this before the voters, my goal is to get the Commissioner to get something before the voters that actually had a chance to pass. And the consensus from the mayor and council here, and they're not wrong, but the consensus from mayor and council here is, that's the option that includes Seabright. So let's figure out how to divide that savings and get this before the voters.
So one could perceive that an effort to move a regionalization of just Atlantic Highlands and Highlands is an effort to kill the whole regionalization effort?
Well, you know, obviously, I'm not going to speculate as to what is motivating different people to behave in different ways, I'm simply going to continue to repeat that which I know to be true, and I know it to be true because we've been doing this for a long time, but remember, all the experts agree on this, and at one time, all three Boards of Education and all three mayors and councils are willing to authorize their attorneys to sign exactly the same document, which is the one that says, a process that should go before the voters is the one that includes Seabright, and that's the one we're going to continue to advocate for.
Okay, my last question. If I understand correctly, the funding formula is derived from two things. It's derived from the portion of equalized value and enrollment, that's part A, and to the best of my knowledge, that has basically been agreed to by the three towns. Part B is any potential sharing that takes place between the towns to try to equalize out savings and benefit, so everybody comes out with a positive feeling of the results and the savings.
So I don't want to pretend that I'm authorized to speak for everyone involved. I have the same understanding you do, obviously, we'll find out next Friday if there are significant variations on that. But the understanding, and we've had many discussions with the attorney for Atlantic Highlands, is that the discussion that's taking place next Friday is not designed to go back to square one, but simply to figure out how to divide the savings from Seabright between Highlands and Atlantic Highlands taxpayers.
Okay, and this is an opinion question, I'm almost done here. I've been in a number of meetings with Dr. Beams, where she has said that the financial aspect and the revenue tax base aspect of this is up to the governing bodies, not to the Board of Education. Should I infer from that that any negotiations around mediation on savings sharings will not include the Board of Education based on that statement?
That the Boards of Education have been given numerous opportunities to participate, they're not excluded from the discussion, so I can't speak to what their intentions are. But keep in mind, what's going on next Friday is so clearly focused, as you well know, Seabright's not participating. This is not going back to square one, it's to figure out what to do with that infusion of cash that's coming from Seabright. So I hope that there's no one who thinks we should go back to square one, because that would be contrary to everything we've done so far.
Okay. And just while I have the pulpit, just for one second. We are very excited about this opportunity, it's been a long journey, and I think the residents of Atlantic Highlands and Highlands also know that once this is approved, hopefully in a referendum in November, it's a very long journey from here, because it takes five years for us to transition out of the old education system, which means we're going to be paying into two education systems, plus we're going to be paying deferred school tax to the tune of about $1.2 million. So Atlantic Highlands and Highlands will be saving millions before Seabright gets to level ground, and once that's all completed, we'll be paying about two and a half times the cost of educating a student, because we appreciate and respect the opportunity to come to the school system. We don't have our own school, we know we have to pay a premium, but we look forward to that day that that will happen. And Mayor, again, to you and the council, and to Porzio, thank you for all your work. Thanks.
Thank you, go please.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, it's Seth, 29 Leonard Avenue, Atlantic Highlands. I also would like to add my thanks to, everybody knows I live in Atlantic Highlands, but my heart still rests here in Highlands, and I want to thank the mayor and council here for working hard on this and for keeping the people informed about it. I don't see any Atlantic Highlands council members here tonight, and I understand that tomorrow night, they also are going to give us their meeting, an update on what's happening. So I did want to ask, what's the deadline for getting this on the ballot, for having come to a conclusion that we can get the question on the ballot in November?
So roughly speaking, you should assume that there has to be an approved question 60 days before the election date that you're talking about, so that if you're talking about this being on the November ballot, you should assume approximately September 1st as a deadline. And that's... September 1st as a deadline, and that, that's set based upon the time it takes to print and then distribute, um, vote by, we used to vote on absentee ballots, because I've been doing this for a while, and I've been voting absentee ballots and vote by mail ballots, but that's where the deadline comes from, in advance of the election. So, um, if the mediation is super successful, and we have an agreement, and everyone's on board, we would then be asking the Department of Education to render a decision approving the matter you submitted to the voters before the end of August, so that we can get the question before the voters in November. If that deadline isn't met, it's not like you have to wait until the following November, as I think you know. In addition to the general election, there are four dates for special school elections, and so, um, there's a, there's an opportunity to have the vote on the, um, second Tuesday in December, there's an opportunity to have the vote on the fourth Tuesday in January, there's an opportunity to have the vote on the second Tuesday in March. So there's a, there's a great deal of flexibility if you miss the November ballot.
Each of which, if we don't have it in November, would cost an additional money for each of the two towns, I'm presuming, each of the three towns, I'm presuming.
As, as part of the new legislation, the state picks up the cost of a special election if you have to have one.
The taxpayers of the state would be paying for the extra election, of which we are some.
Yes.
Just not quite as fast.
Yes. I didn't know if you were from Canada, I wasn't sure, but yes, you are correct.
Um, can you tell me, uh, is the question on the ballot going to be just regionalization for a yes and no vote on Seabright? Isn't it worth, is there a possibility that there's going to be two questions, and you vote for, uh, help us know again, Seabright, and yes, if, if you want just the two towns involved? Or will it just be a one-question ballot, I guess I'm asking?
Um, the, the preference would be that it be one question, and it's, it wouldn't just be yes or no on the structure, but also include the tax levy, right? So the voters would understand what the tax levy implications are. Uh, so it, it undoubtedly would be a complicated and verbose question, but, um, we had hoped to structure it, oh, why don't you read it? Carrie, we, we have, we have the proposed question, if you want to do it.
The, uh, the question that was agreed upon by all six entities and submitted to the commissioner in the petition, like, careful what you wish.
In which petition, you said, Sam?
The initial petition.
Okay.
That was approved by all six entities, including a question that would go to the voters of Highlands and Atlantic Highlands, and a slightly different question to Seabright, because the, the issues are slightly different though.
Right. Did you turn your mic on?
Yes. Can you hear me? Okay. So did, did you need me to repeat what I said? Okay. The, the question that would go to the voters of Highlands and Atlantic Highlands is, shall the Board of Education of the Highlands School District, Atlantic Highlands School District, and Henry Hudson Regional School District join together to convert Henry Hudson Regional into an all-purpose PK-12 regional school district, with the annual and special appropriations for such a two constituent PK-12 regional school district to be apportioned upon the following basis? That part is blank because it hasn't been negotiated. Um, upon conversion of Henry Hudson into a PK-12 regional district, shall the PK-12 regional school district include the borough of Seabright as a constituent member upon approval by the Commissioner of Education of its withdrawal from Oceanport and Shore Regional Schools Districts and approval by the voters of Seabright to join the Henry Hudson PK-12 Regional School, with the annual and special appropriations for the newly expanded three constituent PK-12 Regional School Districts to be...
So it's one question for a yes or a no?
It's a very long question, but correct. One question.
So yes, bring Seabright in.
Correct. You first have to, so for, for Highlands and Atlantic Highlands, you have to expand what you currently have into a PK-12, right? Or Seabright is not permitted to join in the first place. Seabright's only permitted to join if it's joining into that PK-12 Regional School District.
Okay.
So that needs to be part of the question. So it makes it into a very long question, but it is just one question.
Right. Okay. Thank you for telling me on that. And could I ask, have any of the principals who are going to be involved in the mediation next Friday, I, I think you tried to explain this, indicated that you have had some conversations, because my next question is going to be, do you think that this is going to be resolved next Friday night, or do you think it's going to take several meetings?
We don't know. Uh, I, I, I'll say it this way, um, I am unaware of any reason why it couldn't be resolved in one mediation setting.
I'll also add that we are doing everything we can in advance to make it as productive as possible, including some of those initial conversations, getting the experts, the financial experts from Highlands to meet with the Atlantic Highlands financial experts, make sure there are no issues about the numbers, the underlying data that they're relying upon, so that there are no delays when we sit down at the proverbial bargaining table.
And they have met?
They have not met yet. My expectation is that they will do so before the 21st, and I've had that communication with the attorney for Atlantic Highlands as well.
Good. Okay. Thank you kindly. Um, all right, welcome on the, thank Seabright for wanting to give, whichever town I live in, Highlands, or where is my heart, uh, Atlantic Highlands, or where my heart is, for bringing so much money into both of our towns. I do want to thank Mr. Bieber and the rest of the Atlantic Highlands Council for, uh, Seabright Council for working so hard to make this possible for us. Sorry, you're going to be losing money for a while, but I'm glad to have those kids meet with our kids, because they all know each other anyway, and they will be staying together for generations that I know of, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi there. Good evening. My name is Gina Melnick. I live at C5 Hillside Court. Uh, I am the parent of a student at Henry Hudson. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a, uh, former board member, and I just, um, would like to thank the Highlands Council for really diligently working for the taxpayers and the students of Highlands. Um, I, uh, I learned information tonight that was new to me, and I'm, I'm sort of disheartened to hear that, um, the Highlands Board of Education wasn't more enthusiastic about the merger. Um, I'm still kind of, um, confused why there's been no announcement of Seabright no longer being encumbered by the tri-district, because you'd think if they were going to regionalize, that would be good news, and they would be like, "Hey, that thing that made us do that thing in January, we don't have to do that anymore, and now we can go forward with the agreement that we all agreed on from the beginning." Sometimes I think about regionalization, and I, ah, there's a lot of information there, so sometimes I find myself thinking, "Boy, maybe they're right. Maybe we should just do this regionalization now." And then I look at Seabright as like the ghost of Christmas future, because if we, as taxpayers, drip the kool-aid of, "We should agree to 100% over zero," we literally could end up in a position where we have like 50 kids going to elementary school, and Atlantic Highlands has 500, and, and we are doing what Seabright's doing, and we're paying a huge amount of money while, uh, fewer of our students go to the school. And I also want to emphasize that a lot of the benefits that will serve the students, there are some educational benefits. We really serve the students of Atlantic Highlands. Um, the sixth grade moving to Henry Hudson has everything to do with, um, Atlantic Highlands being overcrowded. If you know anything about Highlands Elementary School, send your room. Send your room. Um, so I just really appreciate that this council didn't jump at the shiny new thing and, and take the first offer, because, you know, we are not at some auto show convention where some guy is showing off some new thing, and we're like, "I need that." Like, we don't have to do that. We can take our time. And I think, um, it's vital that while we take our time to do the right thing, we also try to get it moving. I remember when I was a board member in 2019, I was at a delegate assembly representing the district, and I personally asked Steve Swinney, you know, if the district really wants this to happen, how long will it take? And he's like, "It's pretty much up to the district and how, how closely they want to work together and, and, and find common interests, to not have conflicts about finances or, or the structures of our schools." Um, and that was like four years ago. That was four years ago. Uh, one study by the borough, one study by the tri-district, the two studies did the same thing. Last summer, the superintendent said, "The financial experts have met, and they all agree that the numbers are accurate, so we're going to move forward." And then at Atlantic Highlands, the council announces that they want to hire their own financial expert, because they don't really trust, not to be able, we, we doesn't really trust the numbers, and neither is the report, and that's a report that Atlantic Highlands paid for. So, um, I, I, I just want to, again, thank the Highlands Council for really looking out for us, because, um, it's so important, whatever we agree on right now is going to dramatically change the way things are done, because we'll no longer have 25 board members across three different districts. We will have one Board of Education that is able to focus on what is happening from pre-K, which, by the way, we have a very vibrant pre-K program here in Highlands, and, and Atlantic Highlands sometimes just doesn't have enough students to offer pre-K. And so, you know, I scratch my head when, when we're bending over backwards as Highlands residents to subsidize the education of Atlantic Highlands students. So, thank you, thank you for being diligent, thank you for working hard on behalf of our taxpayers, but most of all, thank you for working on behalf of our kids, because once this new Board of Education is formed, and, um, everybody can focus on an educational program that starts in PK and ends in 12, and you don't have this disjointed decision-making, and you can have, um, a, a teacher who, um, you know, is in seventh grade, and they have a high school, um, or, or a sixth, a sixth-grade teacher, but they have a high school certification, you can move them to the other school, and they're not going to lose tenure. So thank you for taking your time, but also thank you for moving it now that we're ready to go, and Seabright's no longer at home. And, um, good luck at your mediation, and hopefully, um, as you just described it, is what happens, that everybody recognizes they're coming to the table, maybe not what's best for them, but so that every, everybody benefits. Thank you. I have to go to, I have to go to work right now, so I'm not, I'm not leaving, like dropping in my, I have to go to work.
Uh, let me just see if anyone that hasn't already spoken would like to say something over there.
Thank you, Mayor Mark Fisher, 9130 Avenue in Atlantic Highlands. Um, with the mediation session coming up next week, thank God it's coming up next week. Um, just a couple of questions around that subject. Um, we had the initial petition, which included the three boroughs. We have a new petition, which is just two boroughs. Will there be any discussion at all at next week's mediation about the two-borough petition? In other words, the funding formula and the savings sharing?
So the, the second petition is not a two-borough petition, it's a petition submitted by the three boards of education only, which would be designed to form a K-12 without Seabright.
Seabright, right.
Our hopeful view, of course, is that the boards of education, um, will recognize, if we have an agreement on a, a funding formula, there's no reason for that other petition. The premise of the other petition was that, um, Seabright was unable to participate because of this other Lito action. That, that was never true, by the way, but that was the, the base. Um, so hopefully that will be moved. Um, if there's a agreement on the formula, and if the Department of Education has no other inventive reasons why this can't be considered, then the approach to which all three boards of education and all three communities originally agreed should not be delayed, and there should be an opportunity to submit the question with Seabright as soon as possible. That's what we're working for.
Yes, the residents of Atlantic Highlands, just a little background, were given the impression that the mediation session would include discussion on the formulas for both petitions. So I think you said it's, it's kind of a moot point, as you meant, at this stage with, with Seabright being unencumbered.
Well, the, the petition submitted by the boards of education has a funding formula in it. It's the 100% equalized property value formula that is currently used to fund the regional district set in 12, and the boards have said, "We should use that of pre-K to 12." Now, again, I have no idea why anyone in Highlands would vote for that, but that's, that, that has a funding formula. So I don't know who said that in Atlantic Highlands or why, but that petition has a formula in it. Our petition says formula to be submitted, and that's what we're looking to accomplish next Friday.
Great. Thank you.
Mark, if I may, just to, to reflect some of the things that you said, that you, we're working for the, um, the tax levy and this other cost share, and I just want to share something from our CFO, who's, uh, been doing this about, I don't know, 35, 40 years. Our CFO said, "There's, there's no way to raise and distribute taxpayer funds for the schools outside of the tax levy." So this other thing, this shiny new thing, to Gina's, uh, comment, it's the tax levy. That's it.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Jill, I also wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I just want to make a, a comment about equalized valuation. We have been living in that scenario in Highlands. So when Cal and I first got together, we were punching numbers, we're like, "Wait a minute. Why are Highlands kids, why are we paying more per kid than Atlantic Highlands is?" And it's simple. They're greater, the, the higher, uh, equalized valuation, but they have more kids. So when you take our equalized valuation and divide it by a small enough, greatly smaller number of kids, we're paying more kids. So it, that's what we've been living on there anyway. So it behooves us to, to juggle a formula in some way so that it, it balances, uh, that it includes at some level the number of students who are attended.
Exactly. And as I was saying before, we're just trying to get to a, a percentage between the three towns where everybody wins, and that there's no, you know, I know, as you said, Erwin, it's going to take some time for you to get out of that five-year commitment, but, um, it'll be better after that time, and better for all of the, all of us, and that's what we're working towards, something that works for everybody. Does anyone else? Want to? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Erwin Bieber, 12 Trade One, Blaine. Three quick points. Um, I've been at several meetings where the Atlantic Highlands mayor and council and the boards of education have said, "We're not proceeding with the three towns because the, uh, Seabright is encumbered." They have also said that upon the time that Seabright is not encumbered, I'll use the word enthusiastically, would be very supportive of this, of the regionalization of the three towns going forward. This is going to be the test right now, because we're at that point, right? We're officially unencumbered. It's been stated that Atlantic Highlands, Highlands, and the three DILs will support it when we get to that point. So people are going to be watching and seeing if they live up to their works going forward. So that's my first point. The second one is a question, Vito, and that is, um, we all very much want to be in a position that we're unified with three towns and three boards of education, fully aligned, putting one petition into the commissioner that is clear as day with a funding formula, and it makes it very, very easy. I will tell you, after going through several meetings, I am not convinced the Board of Education will ever get there. My question is, if the three towns submit a petition jointly to the, to the commissioner with a funding formula, can it be approved without participation of the boards of education in that?
If, if your question is, does the law permit that? The answer is yes. You know, we long operated under the assumption that the best chance of success is the three boards of education and the three towns working together, um, but that's not required. So, um, I think it's far better that all six work together, rather than the towns and the boards of education have dual-in petitions, but the, the law does not preclude that, and the law does not elevate one over the other. But if we're asking the Department of Education to do something that's never done before, which is use this particular statute to get something before the voters, I think we simply make it more difficult on ourselves if they're doing petitions, and if the Commissioner of Education said, "I'm not going to act on either one of the, you folks reached agreement," she certainly has that thought. It doesn't have to work that way, no. Uh, nothing surprises you in New Jersey. Heck, there was a guy who stood up here earlier tonight, I think the first guy in America, to say he had a tattoo on one arm in tribute to his wife, and it was going to have the word "unencumbered" on the other arm. Now, the guy says he's unencumbered, I don't know what this tattoo about his wife is doing. Now, the guy says he's unencumbered, I don't know what this tattoo about his wife is doing. So, you never know in New Jersey, you can tell now.
Well, I, I guess the point in this is, it's going to be very evident over the next couple of weeks, kind of where people stand, and, and how they come down against the comments that were made. The, the last thing I want to say, and I promise for this evening, is, I, I think in general we all see that there is a very, very strong push in the state of New Jersey for regionalization. We have the highest property taxes in the country, it's crushing our residents, people are moving out of the town because they can't afford to live in New Jersey. And for most of us, property taxes is close to 50% covered by education, right? And Seabright, I think it's about 46%, and Highlands, I think it's, Atlantic Highlands is 54%, right? A very high number, so something, something has to be done about this. I believe in the long term, if we, Atlantic Highlands, Highlands and Seabright don't do something about this, it's going to get done for us. The state will come in with, my opinion, will come in with a heavy hand and will deal us a set of cards that we have no control over. Contrary to that, I also believe that if Atlantic Highlands, Highlands and Seabright take the initiative to regionalize, we will be embracing the, the governors and the commissioners' vision of where they want to go, even though we only graduated about 35 kids out of Henry Hudson last year, that's not sustainable. But I believe by going down this path of regionalization, we will get some level of immunity, I believe, for a period of time, because we will have embraced the vision of where the state wants to go, we will do the right thing for the students and the taxpayers, and they'll use us as an example of the direction we want to move in rather than having something done to the communities that they don't want to have happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other comments? Questions?
Sean Rooney, 196 Ocean Avenue, Seabright. Um, I remember back in August, you know, Atlantic Highlands had come up with the 50-50 forever, and we all agreed that forever was horrible. Uh, it's been horrible for Seabright, and, uh, we could just see recently what happened with the equalized value and what happened in one year, you know, so obviously, things can change. So, what would be the wording, um, on how often we would be looking at this? Like, is this going to be every seven years, the formula we come up with, hopefully in November?
So, I, I, I hope you, you forgive us, but there are various options, we're not going to discuss what we might be negotiating next Friday here in a public forum, but the, the statute permits the, the phase-in period, which we've talked about, that's what Seabright already understands in terms of, as it's paying out, uh, to Shore Regional and Oceanport, it's going to see slowly its obligations to a new K-12 increase. And then you can, um, have a, a period of 10 years where the formula can modify to deal with any changes in equalized property value or, um, enrollment. Rather than a structure, and this is about as specific as I'm going to be publicly, but rather than a structure where you would see, um, a renegotiation every seven years, because we see how easy that is to do, I, I instead am anticipating discussions that, uh, provide for, um, a, a limitation on variation. That is to say, um, the percentage paid by each town can never get more than so far apart. There have been, um, bills submitted to the legislature, which never went anywhere, prior to the bill that permits this, where they talked about changing the legalization formulas, but there weren't these great disparities anymore. So I think there, there are ways to have a, um, limitation in, um, variation between Highlands and Atlantic Highlands built into the formula, which is different than renegotiating the formula over every period of time, where you know that if there's some great change in one community or the other, um, the disparity between the two is never going to be more than X. That's the sort of framework that I would anticipate, because you can't have a formula, the statute doesn't permit this, where every seven years or for 10 years, you're going back to square one and renegotiating. The, the statute doesn't permit that. So, we'll see what happens next Friday, but there are ways to limit disparities between the two communities so that no one winds up in the position that Seabright has found itself in for the past 30 years.
I'm a new board member on the Board of Ed. There are also two other new board members here tonight. We embrace regionalization, and we also embrace having Seabright. We weren't, did not have that question put to us at the last meeting. It was just to, to regionalize with Atlantic Highlands. That was the only question we got to vote on. Uh, we, I know pretty much the, the new current board, the board president, and I believe the other women that are here tonight, we all embrace regionalization with Seabright. So, we just have to have the mechanism of revoting, and, you know, when is this going to happen now? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jonathan Bush, I'm the, uh, special counsel for the Henry Hudson, Atlantic Highlands and Highlands Board of Education. I'm at 450 Main Street from the Bush Law Group. And I, I, I'm just going to clarify a couple of things. I appreciate you, you know, hosting this event today, and I appreciate, um, Gagliardi and Ms. Wright, who I've worked with, uh, over the years, are highly professional. Um, but there's a, there's a couple pieces of clarity that we, as, as Boards need to provide. Number one, as one of our board members has stated, we absolutely are looking for regionalization. That's been a goal from the very beginning, and we continue to seek that goal. The mechanism, the way we go about this is, is important, and the way we go about this to ensure that we get to the finish line that everybody in this room seems to embrace is equally important. So the first thing I'm going to say is, we agree that if we had Seabright in our district, in a regionalized district, everybody would be better off. We said that during our meeting, a number of you were at that meeting, it's incredibly important to us, at some point, if we can get Seabright in, we want them in. Number one. Number two, let's go through a little bit of what's happened with the timeline, as described by Mr. Gagliardi earlier. We filed jointly at the end of July, I believe, July 18th, is that the date?
July 15th.
July 15th, okay, thank you, Karen. We filed jointly, and obviously, um, some steps were taken thereafter that, um, brought us to where we are now. We were sued by, uh, Oceanport and Shore Regional, and then on behalf of both the municipalities, or at least two of the municipalities, with Mattia Covi in Yenna Municipality, and us on our, all of our beheads, um, Porzio filed a motion to dismiss, which was the decision for which came out last week. But, one of the pieces, while we were waiting for the other question about what's going to happen with our July 15th petition, is the question of whether or not the commissioner's going to resolve that one. And, you know, in many ways, our request for a November of 2022 election was overlooked because we never heard anything back. Now, I know it's the position of Porzio, and obviously it's a result, um, you know, it's, it's clients, that the reason that the commissioner has not resolved or looked at or responded to us or anything is in fact because the, uh, petition did not include follow-up information. And the follow-up information, of course, has to do with the formula and the sharing. But we don't know that, and the fact is, we don't know that. In fact, I don't believe that, you know, uh, Mr. Gagliardi, in his very eloquent letter today, on, on behalf of all of us, which I appreciate that you sent today, um, knows either, because we, it was inquired as to what is the holdup, and it was a very friendly way of sort of nudging the commissioner to say, what is the holdup with respect to our joint petition? All right, so, so there's that. Um, but, you know, as a result of all of this, and obviously before the decision, the boards decided to take a smaller bite. That's all we did, it's not ideal. You know, the boards didn't want to be put in this position, the boards wanted to go ahead and have an election in last November, where we would be able to vote on, uh, regionalization with all of us, all three towns, all three boards. But the problem we had, and we're, we're, we still believe we're faced with today, was, was, you know, the Seabright issue. Now, I, I'm trying to say to, you know, Charlie Rooney, with all due respect, on the tattoo, uh, comment, which was very funny, by the way, um, I would not go about getting a permanent tattoo on the other arm that says unencumbered yet, because the commissioner's decision last week did not say that. What it said, and I think a lot of you have read it, this is a very educated, impressive community, what it said was, number one, that the commissioner resolves, um, to, uh, dismiss the portion of the petition that had to do with the municipal and the Boards of Education's resolutions. In fact, the resolutions that we all adopted were proper. And that doing that and authorizing us to go ahead on that June, sorry, July 15th petition was acceptable. But the second point of the dismissal, where we asked to resolve that Seabright in fact can leave and would be unencumbered, was specifically not addressed by the commissioner. In fact, the commissioner said herself that we do not reach a determination on that question. And so, I appreciate very much that Mr. Gagliardi wrote this letter today, because maybe we will get some sort of responsibility to send it against the commissioner, they've asked specifically to send it to the, the county superintendent, but I, I would have done the same thing, by the way.
It was your vote.
Well, you copied, right, of course, I, I know. But, uh, but, but we're still in the same position, we're trying to get to the same place. The boards have the same goals as the municipalities, we do, and we're, we're trying to get there. But we have to make sure that we can find a way to do it in a legally recognizable mechanism. And at this point, we are still in a position where we have an unresolved joint petition, which we haven't quickly withdrawn from, obviously, because it's our desire to hope that one day we could be with Seabright, number one. But we also have this other petition, which was like the second best option, but the only option as we saw at the time. The lawsuit is still out there, it's still pending before the commissioner. I hope that the commissioner comes up with a decision, in fact, during our conversation today, I said to Mr. Gagliardi, it'd be great if we get a, a decision tonight, or tomorrow. And if at that point we get a decision where they truly declare that Seabright is unencumbered, we're a different position, but we are not there yet. And, and there's another piece of this as well, it's important to, to raise. When the commissioner issues a decision, parties who are, obviously, parties to that decision have 45 days to appeal those decisions to, uh, the appellate division, the Superior Court appellate division. We're obviously within the 45-day window, as I spoke with Mr. Gagliardi about today, we're hoping that, you know, that issue at least is, aside, it's a good thing that we won at least half of that motion to dismiss, but it's just half. And so, I don't think it fundamentally changes everything. It changes a little bit, it doesn't change enough at this point, and so we're going to have to discuss as a board what that means, and hopefully, the, is a sign that the commissioner's office is starting to activate and react and respond, so we can get to the point where we're all together again. And whether it's this go-around or the next time, one way or another, we're ready to have a referendum, a referendum in respect of communities, where we can hopefully get Seabright, uh, as part of our new school district, whatever that is. Thank you.
Hi, Linda Zambra, 25th Grand Tour in Highlands. It's great news that Seabright's unencumbered, but it sounds like it's not clear just yet that they're unencumbered. Um, I had, and I apologize, I'm not as well informed as everyone in this room, but my understanding was that there was some sort of indemnification agreement that Seabright would not hold any, um, liability, uh, for a potential lawsuit, but they can pass that liability on to Highlands and Atlantic Highlands. And, okay, so then, I guess my question is, why wouldn't we dismiss the two-town proposal, uh, two-towns proposal and just start with the three-town proposal? I'm not clear on my, my.
The two-towns proposal was done solely with the Boards of Education, with zero input from the committees of councils of these three towns.
But, um, the last gentleman, I believe, represents the boards?
Correct.
Okay, so, given that fact, can, may I address a question to him?
No, 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 why don't you address the question to Mr. Gagliardi?
Mr. Gagliardi, wha, what, what reason would the three boards not support withdrawing the two-town proposal if there is indeed a dem, an indemnification agreement?
So, I, I can't think of a good reason why they wouldn't, but it has nothing to do with indemnification. As Mr. Bush mentioned, we represented everybody in our successful application to have the Oceanport and Shore Regional petition dismissed. Um, the, the language in that, um, decision that Mr. Bush referenced, and he said, you know, don't get the tattoo yet, don't get a permit made, because the commissioner said, I've still got to address that issue, um, to me, is, is a statement of fact. That is to say, we knew when we submitted our petition jointly, all six parties, last July, the commissioner naturally had to say that the change in structure for each of the three communities made sense from an educational standpoint. So the fact that she said here something we already knew doesn't tell me anything. What it tells me is that the commissioner is going to honor the intent of the law. The intent of the law was that Oceanport and Seabright could not block, I'm sorry, Oceanport and Shore Regional could not block Seabright from leaving. That's the whole reason this law was passed in the first place, to allow for more regional school districts. So, I'm very optimistic. Seabright will have to shoulder the burden of any additional litigation, but I'm very optimistic as to how it's going to turn out. The purpose of the law is clearly and repeatedly stated, which is to facilitate the creation of regional school districts, which, in the case of this law, if Seabright is joining a K-12 district, does not allow the other communities in Shore Regional to have a vote where they could clearly outvote Seabright. The idea that the commissioner would allow those boards to do through litigation, that which the legislation specifically prohibits them from doing at the voting box, makes no sense whatsoever. So, yeah, the Department of Education is going to behave cautiously, because this has never been done before, it's a brand-new statute, but I have had the absolute privilege of helping many communities do something to restructure their regional school district that had never been done before, and we've done it over and over again. There has never been a law designed so friendly in the way it's been designed for these communities. And so I think whether it's the commissioner or the courts, the purpose of the legislation is very clear. So I do think that Seabright is unencumbered in the sense that the commissioner is going to do now what the commissioner was going to do when all six entities agreed in July, which is make sure that this new structure makes sense for all of the schoolchildren involved in all of the districts. And I think if you look at that, there is no constitutional reason why the voters won't get to be heard on this. The only encumbrance is the failure to date of Highlands and Atlantic Highlands that's still in that bite in the petition, and that's what I hope we will be doing next Friday. And yes, as Mr. Bush said, if there's any other reason, we'd ask the Department of Education to articulate it, but no matter what the reason is, I do not believe it will prevent this issue from getting before the voters if we can, heaven help us, agree on a formula.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Allison Jacob, 78 Grand Avenue in Atlantic Highlands. I'm on the Board of Ed for Atlantic Highlands. I am speaking for myself, but I want to answer your question. The reason isn't because we don't have an indemnification, indemnification helps us against losses and damages financially, but we've already lost a lot of time. In order for Seabright, and I want to reiterate this, we want Seabright. Okay, I can speak for the boards in that manner, we do want Seabright. However, we took the petition in July, and the Boards of Education have a lot of work to do in order to bring Seabright in. Think about when you're having a party, and you're having families from all over the place come over to your house for a party. You're going to clean that house, you're going to get your food ready, you're going to be prepared for your guests. So we want Seabright to come, but in order, we got a shit show of three districts. It's, I'm serious. It's, I'm serious, right? You've got two K through sixes and you have a seven through, or six through, or seven through twelve, right? They have, we have to be a K through twelve in order for Seabright to come through the doors.
We've got to clean the house. Just referring to person, sorry, you're on videotape right now and this goes on our website and on our YouTube channel.
I apologize, ma'am, I really do. What I'm saying is, there's a lot to do. Think about your house before company comes over and all the work that you have to do in order to get them in. That's what we're doing. Because we didn't have any acknowledgement from the Commissioner in order from the petitions back in July, we were like, we want to get on the ballot. We want something to move forward. We want to be on the ballot in September of '23, because we know it's going to take a year for us to get our act together to invite Seabright in September of '24, because that's when schools start, not November, September. So that's really why, we're not saying that we're not identified, we're just saying that we're losing time in order to get this done, because the sooner we, um, get the schools together and Seabright in, not only Seabright, but the three schools together, what Mr., what Mr. Bieber said, is what I said as the Mayor of Council and Meeting back in Atlantic Highlands, is we want to slow down the loss of the state aid for Highlands and Henry Hudson that we have every year. We want to slow that down. And when we regionalize those three schools, not only do we slow down the loss of the state aid, we actually get a boost, so we don't lose as much and as not as fast. Then we bring Seabright in and it's win-win for everybody. That's really why we were pushing for this. It wasn't because we didn't want to be with Seabright, it's when we wanted to get something done in order to move forward. So that's my, uh, answer to your question.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, let me, let me just say this. We, we, we all know the, uh, the apocryphal story of the, um, the guy who kills his parents and then when he's in court asks for mercy from the judge because he's an orphan, right? We have been trying to move forward with this mediation for months. And what I would ask in this forum of the Boards of Education is this, if Highlands and Atlantic Highlands municipal leaders reach agreement on a formula and the Boards of Education decide that that formula doesn't seem fair, we will have the continuation of a delay that has been visited upon us by ourselves. That is to say, Boards of Education who ask for the mediation are not participating in the mediation. If they're not participating because they're prepared to live with Highlands and Atlantic Highlands agreement, if one is reached, that's terrific, because it's very efficient. If they're not participating because they want to have their own view of what the formula should be and we continue to delay filling in the blanks in our own petition, there's no mystery to me as to why the Department of Education hasn't moved forward, that the Department of Education cannot dictate to us what the formula is. We have to figure it out and get permission to put it on the ballot. So my view of the Boards of Education role here is quite simple. If it's collaborative and designed to support a structure where Seabright is included once this mediation results in a formula, then that's great. If it's designed to do something else, we'll know that soon enough. But right now, without regard to any issue that they have with the efficiency or lack thereof of the Department of Education, the fact that this has not moved appears to be because we have not provided forthwith a word that all the lawyers agreed on. We have not provided forthwith that formula. Let's do it. Let's get the Board of Education here and the other two boards on board and then we'll deal with the Department of Education. If it comes down to that, I expect very successfully a submission to the voters here. If we continue in this circular firing squad, we will never know what else the Department of Education is concerned about, because we will be in a position to, to insist on a decision, since we left a gap in our own request for that decision.
Just one, one additional question. So within the four-year study, there was a projection, I believe, that said how many Seabright children would be added to the city of Highlands and Highlands, if that gotten up, would score for grade. That, is that accurate?
I think yes.
So always on my mind. Correct. And, and once again stating that aside from the potential remediation of an overcrowding situation in Atlantic Highlands, educationally, nothing changes. Do the Highlands kids still go to Highlands Elementary? Do Atlantic Highlands kids still go to Atlantic Highlands Elementary? There is no other variable in terms of what easily they have in Board of Education. That's correct, yeah. Thank you.
May I clarify here? As someone who was a, a, a district administrator in a 5,000-student district, I would reiterate what Donna just said, the need is probably going to be the union, the union contract, replacement of SAA, and you can do that. You know, that, that's not a, that's not that big of an idea. Uh, the union contract, and, and I believe that the health insurance has been consolidated, that they're all on the same, uh, health insurance, so that's a way to get at it. So I, I'm an optimist, but I believe if you set your mind to it and you have the right people around you, you can do anything.
Absolutely. All right, any further comments from the public? Going to close public portion? Any further comments from the table?
Just, just as a budget season.
Yes.
Uh, knowing that we're, we're looking at our, our budget, um, year over year, I might be, it's something real, I'm ready, maybe to see my such sheets, but if we have a single line item that increased year over year from '22 to '23, what, what would that be? The salaries, the public payers?
For sure. But if, if we break that out and, and we break out as a line item, meaningful purposes, like school versus reserves, year over year, by my view of the budgets, we're going up $700,000 based on that line item for school. So, so by far, the largest increase in total spend is being attributed to the school, is probably going to be in the class. Yep.
Can I call you a second? Let's go. Let's go, okay. Like I said, we are, uh, we are ready to work collaboratively to get something done. I know there's been talk about July, August, all this other jazz. No, I, I want these things to get done before the summary starts, because why waste the time? Just go out, get it done, find something everyone can agree on, and then just do it. And that is my plan. So I would like to thank you all for coming out tonight. And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, favor?
All right.
Thank you. Leaving a turn at 7:40.